Good evening. I will call our school committee meeting for October 12th to order if we could stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start with introduction amendment.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Denise Carey, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pella-Gallaroni, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
It doesn't look like we have our student reps, but if they show up, we will.
Oh, they have a game.
Maybe at the committee update, we can fill in any events or anything that we're aware of. Looking for a motion for consent agenda A warrants in minutes of meeting for September 14th?
So moved.
Motion made by Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor of consent agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have public forum. Anyone's here to address us? Now is the time. We are going to have to take a few items out of order tonight just because of some of the things we need to take care of. So with your approval, I would look to move to report of Superintendent MCAS data from Jason, just so we can move into finishing his evaluation, which is under our line. Anyone opposed to that?
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Oh, I don't have my clicker. Oh, here it comes.
About there that things got shifted around.
Oh, okay. Sorry, one moment.
Technical difficulty. Oh, there you go. Okay. Sorry about that technical difficulty.
Okay. Hit the reset here. Good evening again, everybody. Good to see you. We have our principals here tonight as we go through our end of year MCAS data and accountability data. So if there are any specific questions, we have the team here that we could certainly speak to. They could come up too if you have any school-specific or grade-specific information that you're looking for. And Carrie Purcell is also here from Focus Schools, and she's going to jump into the discussion later on and talk about some of the so what now what and get into the next steps of the work. And so Erin, thank you and the committee for moving this to the top because as the committee knows and the community, school community may recall, my evaluation is tied directly to our student achievement and accountability results. So this is a really important piece of this evening's agenda. So with that, we'll jump right in. There are a few goals for our discussion tonight around our end-of-year data, and I listed them here because it isn't just about looking at the end-of-year results and seeing where we landed with our growth and achievement, but we're also going to do a couple of other things. We're going to take a look at our STAR results and our MCAS results. That's an important piece because as the school committee very much knows, we've been using STAR as some level of an indicator to show the progress and growth the kids are making during the year and to help forecast where we'll end by the end of the school year. And as you will see this evening, some of the data is on the mark and some of it's really far, far off. So we wanted to take a look at that and also to underscore the fact that we have an assessment committee that is going to be delving into that to really help us make sure we're using the right tools in the right ways for the right information. So a little bit about that. We also are going to be looking at how we did in 2023 as a district compared to the state, which is another important measure. It's not the measure, it's not the end-all, but it is an important measure to see how our students stack up against their peers. We're going to look a little bit at our accountability data and talk about our strengths and opportunities. And just as a reminder, our accountability data is not just MCAS, that's part of it, the growth and achievement, but it also includes things like chronic absenteeism, dropout rates, graduation rates, students enrolled in rigorous coursework that's defined specifically as like advanced placement courses. And so the Department of Education tracks all of that. So we wanted to take a minute to share out the work that's been done in that space as well, and then to talk a little bit about our next steps, but specifically forecasting us into this year's goals, which is another item on the agenda for tonight. So with that, the first goal we're going to look at in a real deep level for this presentation solely is around our student learning goal. And so there are two slides in your packet. The first is just what we kind of call the headline because the second, the goal itself, is actually really wordy. There's a lot going on in there. And so we wanted to be able to kind of lift the important pieces out of it, which is just this, that essentially we would see a 5% increase in meeting and exceeding expectation numbers across the board and that our SGP would be at 50 and that we would keep a strong focus on these student groups. So these are kind of the headlines from the much more detailed lengthy goal, but I wanted to start with the goal at the beginning so we can kind of re-anchor our thinking around what we're looking for as far as outcomes. And so we'll jump straight into the data. And again, I won't read through all of the numbers and things on the slides, but there's a few important pieces to really pay attention to. This slide is specifically our overall ELA results, not only for MCAS but also for STAR. So again, we have all in one slide, one comparative kind of piece of information for us to look at. What you will see in the MCAS column, so if you look all the way to the right, you'll see that MCAS 23 and then the 22 is in brackets. That is because if you look underneath at the grade levels, so for instance, grade three, you'll see our 23 scores of meeting and exceeding expectations were 50%, 50%, and you'll see the 22 results were 47%. And that we made, if you look at that top right-hand box of the slide, you'll see the E, the SP, and DM, so exceeded, some progress, and did not meet. That's what those letters mean. So we tried to make this kind of a one-stop shopping for our data. You can see how we did compared to what STAR said. You can see how we did compared to our 22 results and if we met the goal or not. So you can see in grades three, four, and five, we made some progress. In grade six, we exceeded the goal. And in grade 10, we made some progress. And in grades seven and eight, we did not meet. An interesting comparison is again to look at those STAR results. One of the things that we've been talking about as a leadership team as it relates to this is that MCAS is of course a state norm test. So it just looks at our kids against other kids in their grade level across the state. STAR is a nationally normed test, so it looks at how our kids did against every third grader in the country that takes the test. And it's not every third grader by any sense, but STAR is a very regularly used assessment by many, many school districts nationwide. So in some cases, it's interesting, if you look at our grade three results, it looks like 58% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations. We could make an argument it's 58% as far as our nationwide results and how we did compare to other kids. Where statewide, we were at 50, so it's a little bit lower. And so there could be a lot of theories behind the why of that, but just know that as a leadership team, we're delving into those conversations. So that's a bit about our overall ELA results. Again, you can see in all but two grades, we either made some progress and in one grade we exceeded. Math tells a different story, but I want to preface this with the understanding that last year our teachers were implementing a brand-new math program. It was their first year with Intu Math. We're finally, we're making our way through year two with it. So seeing an implementation dip isn't always unusual. It oftentimes can take a little bit longer for our staff to work through the scope and sequence of skills and content because it's new. It's a new process, it's a new series. Our kids are grappling with it, it's a new series for them as well. So sometimes you will see an implementation dip. We do have a couple of outliers in grades four and grade six where you can see we actually exceeded the goal of 5%. So there is some good news there. And then again, if you look at the STAR 23 results in that middle column, you can see where we're on the mark in the grade levels where we're very far apart. And I think, you know, the math results highlight this probably better than the others in terms of seeing the discrepancies between the achievement levels there. So again, a big discussion point for the leadership team and thinking about our next steps with STAR. So while this is not a goal, we don't, you know, we don't set a number on the number of kids not meeting expectations, we're focused on the other end. We thought it might be helpful to take a look at this as well. So these are the not-meeting-expectation percentages for English Language Arts. And again, we have our STAR results and our MCAS results. These numbers line up a little bit more than a meeting and exceeding numbers, but as you'll see, not in all grade levels. So you can see in grade three, we have 12% of our students not meeting grade-level expectations. In grade four, we have 7%. In grade five, we have 8% in through each of the grade levels. Clearly, you can see our middle school remains a huge focus for us, and we're going to talk about that in a bit, very specifically, I know when Carrie shares some of the work that she's doing with Mary and the team here at the middle school. Similarly, with math, again, you can get a sense of where the percentages fell with our students not meeting expectations. Grade three was at 10%, grade four at 9%, grade five at 7%. And then again, the concern being in seventh and eighth grade with 22% and 20%. I do want to call out the high school, I think it's important to note. If you go back to the ELA results for a moment, we had 9% of students, which I think was about seven students if I'm remembering the number correctly, Ms. Fallis, and then we had 3% in math. So nice to see that the work that we're doing to get our students at the high school over the hurdle, to meet that graduation requirement or the CD requirement, competency determination as it's referred to, the high school is helping to get those students across that hurdle. The students that, as you know, that did not make it over that into the partially meeting will have an opportunity to retake that. So science is kind of interesting. We really struggled this year, or last year, with fifth and eighth grade. You can see the results here. We didn't meet either one of those goals. Tenth grade, we're in a transition, so we actually only had 26 students take the exam. So I wanted to list that, the rest of them will take it this year. So we had 89%, but it was 89% of the 26 students that took it. So we wanted to make sure to qualify that with the actual number. And then we'll be shifting to, I think it's the bio MCAS this year that they'll be taking. Those numbers will change as the students take that, gear up to take that this year. Eighth grade also, just to identify, last year we had one eighth-grade team, we had one eighth-grade teacher teaching science. This year, we have two eighth-grade teams and we have two new eighth-grade teachers that have been hard at work, working with their instructional coach and our district lead coach. Right now, they're working through something called a lesson study, which is actually a pretty cool opportunity for the teachers to work together to develop a common lesson and then go into each other's classrooms and observe one another and give each other feedback on, you know, the implementation of that lesson. So we're doing some new pieces of work in eighth-grade science specifically to help move the needle there. So our growth rates, if we take a look, and now we shift from proficiency levels or meeting and exceeding levels to our SGP or student growth percentile. And again, for our families tuning in at home, our student growth percentile is essentially the percent of students that they outgrew that had the same score as them the year before. So if you take a look across the board, you can see where we fell with STAR again versus MCAS. And again, I want to just highlight this because you'll see in some places we were getting quite a false positive in terms of our thinking that we were doing a lot better in some cases than we were. As far as student growth was concerned, particularly you can see grade six ELA, our STAR SGP was 55, but our MCAS SGP was 36. So you can see the discrepancy between that. And again, not to make this like, you know, kind of edgy speak, but it's important to just remind folks that STAR is a nationally normed test. So that 55 percentile of growth for our sixth graders was against every sixth grader that took it in the country versus the 36th in Massachusetts. So lots of work to do. And you can see in grade four, we exceeded the growth rate. In grade five, we were close. I marked it as we didn't meet it because we didn't, but we were about two points off. Grade six and seven, we did not meet. Grade eight, we were close, we were five points off. And then grade 10, we were six points off. Mathematics, you can see the results listed as well with STAR and MCAS side by side. What's interesting, what is a big concern for us is when we see a grade level that will have a high achievement level based on the class from the year before, right? So if you look at the sixth grade, for instance, the sixth grade showed nice growth in their achievement, but if you look at the sixth grade SGP, they didn't meet the target of 50, right? They grew in the 39th percentile. So that actually means that while year over year, the sixth grade students showed progress as far as grade six, those students as a cohort actually did not show the progress that we would have wanted to see. That would have been reflected in their growth. So you can track the data multiple ways. We look at it year over year from an instructional perspective to say, what are the things that were taught well, the skills, the concepts, the content? But we look at it from a cohort perspective, which is where the growth comes into play, to say, did those kids grow? Did those students in front of that teacher that year actually grow? So we look at the data from multiple perspectives to help us address both learning challenges and instructional challenges. Another focus of ours was looking at how our students with special needs are growing and achieving. And this is always a tricky student group to focus on because often the population changes. You have kids coming in and out of special ed, and typically, if they are at meeting or exceeding expectations for any period of time, they will usually, not always, but they will usually come off their IEP, depending upon what the goals are set for. And so what we did, instead of having another slide deck with all of the rows and columns, was we actually just put the aggregate data together. The state also reports out data in terms of grades three through eight and then just the high school data. So we aggregated the data together. And Jill, I don't know if there's any specifics you wanted to share on?
Well, no, I mean, within that three to eight, there were definitely some grades that, you know, were stronger or showed stronger growth than others. But overall, as a student subgroup, you know, our kids are showing some nice growth that in the past we haven't seen as much. But you'll see there, overall, it was 49, but we did have some grade levels, which pretty much aligned with what we saw with the, you know, the fourth grade or the fifth grade. We saw, but we did see some really nice growth with our special education students this year. And as Jason was saying, our students do come in and out of special ed, so it's a different population of students. Not all different, but with our population, if we have, you know, 20 students in a grade, two students make a big difference for that. But we do keep an eye on all of our students individually. So we look at them as a whole, but we also look at individual performance and how we can best support those students.
Are they, I don't know why, I might already know the answer to this, but are these results pulled out of this?
They're part of this. Yep, they are. So yes, the one that was presented for the class, everyone is in there, and then we look at our subgroup separately.
And then another piece to just remind our family and friends at home, when you look at the results, particularly when you look at a single-grade result, there's about 10 to 14 students in any given grade level that are on an education plan. So there's not a large number. A couple of those students move and it can make a big impact on the overall percentages. So I just wanted to identify that. And then similarly, you can see with the math results. One of the things that was really interesting with grade 10 math, we didn't have any students in the meeting or exceeding expectations column, but 87% of the students were in partially meeting, which is really, I think is a really important data point to lift up. And that was up in 55% the year before. That's actually important because again, that partially meeting category helps our students meet the graduation requirement for their diploma, which is important. It's, you know, receiving your diploma over a certificate of completion is a big difference for a student. So I just wanted to identify the increase.
That increases for that subgroup, right?
And here is a snapshot of how we did compared to the state. So BMR and ELA bettered the state in eight of the 14 categories. So you can see them here. I identified the categories in blue where we were ahead of the state and then in red where we were below the state. And so some of them, we were close, like if you look at grade 10, we were about five points off of the meeting and exceeding percent numbers or percentages for ELA. But then other grades, we were not, right? Look at seventh and eighth grade, we're definitely an outlier. We're about half of the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. Grade six, we were about 4% off. And then if you go to the other end of the continuum, so to speak, the not-meeting numbers, we were the head of the state in every category except for two. And again, that was seventh and eighth grade for ELA. Not a measurement we use, but it's an important benchmark to see how are our students doing as compared to the state. And you can see in some grades, we're quite far ahead. If you look at fourth grade, for instance, you can see 50% meeting and exceeding versus 40% of fourth graders statewide. Our students, 7% not meeting versus 17% statewide and not meeting. And then again, if you look at the seventh and eighth grade, you can see the opposite. Mathematics, we bettered the state in grades three, four, and six. Grade five, seven, eight, and 10, we did not. But in the not-meeting category, we bettered the state in every grade level, or we were on par with where the state was. Again, not a measurement that we typically focus on as far as goals, but it's important to share. This is a really important piece of the work that we've spent quite a bit of time talking about, and we've already been working with our school librarians. We had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago and are moving forward with some planning around increasing the literacy levels for our young men and trying to do that by getting texts in their hands that they're interested in reading. So one of the things that we're going to start, we've already have a draft of it together, is to send out a survey to our students. We're going to ask all the kids, clearly. We want to make sure that we're getting the, you know, the different genres and authors and texts and things that they're interested in. But I will be coming back to the school committee with a report on that and looking for some resources to help fund, very specifically, our young men and making sure that we have literature that they are interested in, we have authors, we have genres, we have, you know, whether they're graphic novels, whether they're ebooks, magazines. We really want to just get them reading. And so we're going to send out our survey very soon through our ELA classes, and we're taking this on district-wide. So we had a really productive conversation with the librarians at each of our four schools and myself. We lay out an action plan, and then Sarah Tasker did a great job of putting together the survey that we're going to use across the district. And Mark Leff, who is our new librarian, has already started putting together some different reading challenges that we want to be able to promote and put out to our kids. Marie Smith at MES and Jessica at the complex have also been very involved in the planning of this and are really excited to see this become a big focus for our work. So the data speaks for itself. We have a lot of work to do to help close the gap specifically for our boys. So I wanted to share this piece of data along with the others because it remains a focus in terms of helping to move our young men forward. Before I jump into the accountability highlights, I know there was a bunch of information. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions or anything they want to go back to or get deeper into. I'm happy to answer any questions folks might have.
I just, I want to mention the STAR testing. I guess I'm not quite understanding how the STAR scores are helping with the MCAS because they're all over the map. So I'm not quite getting that, and I'm not sure like what you do with, once you get the results from STAR, where you go with it.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that. So, and I'll jump back to a slide that has it. I'll just grab one here. So yeah, so you can see the discrepancies between that. So STAR is used as, and it's called an interim assessment, which just means we do it a bunch of times. And it's used as a formative measure. STAR is an adaptable test, which means, right, so like when you take MCAS, it's a group of fourth graders, they're taking all fourth-grade standards, they're looking at all fourth-grade reading selections, all fourth-grade questions, right? It's like the fourth-grade benchmark. When you take STAR, you start there, but as students either start answering questions correctly or incorrectly, the test actually adapts. So it'll either scaffold up and you can end up as a student in fourth grade, reading sixth-grade text, which is great, right? Because you're reading more challenging texts. Or you can be a fourth-grade student, I'm just using fourth grade as an example, and it scaffolds down and you're reading second-grade material because you're really struggling.
During the test? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, these are good questions. Yep.
During the test.
During the test. So it's an adaptable test that changes in real time based on how the students do.
But MCAS doesn't do that, right?
MCAS doesn't do that, nope.
So I'm still not quite grasping how STAR is helping prepare for the state test.
It may not. It may not be helping. So, and let me explain what I mean by that. In some ways, the data that we get from STAR is, in all ways, the data we get from STAR is incredibly helpful for the teacher in that moment in that classroom, right? So if I have 24 kids in my room, fourth grade, I collect all that data and I see, okay, this is helpful. I have these six kids reading at a seventh-grade level, I have these three at a second-grade level, I have these four at a fifth-grade level, et cetera. It also says, here are the standards and skills in my classroom where my kids are proficient and the ones where they're struggling. So as a teaching tool, it's really helpful. The teachers will take that information to their grade-level meetings, they'll meet with the coach, they set up those response-to-intervention groups. So you could, and that's how you end up. One way, you end up in like an accelerated group, or you end up in a group that's focused on phonics and phonemic awareness, right? So it's a data point we use for that. What we have done historically, what I have done historically, is I've used it as a measurement to help us forecast where we're going to land by the end of the year. We are finding that as a summative test, to your point, Tara, it's not helpful. It's not telling us where the kids are necessarily going to land. As a formative test in helping the teachers make real-time decisions in their classroom, it's really helpful. So it may not, and that's why I wanted to include it here, because it may not be the best measurement for us to sit around and say, how are the kids doing? It may not be the best tool for that. It's a very good tool to say, what are the kids doing? They're working on these things, they're doing well here and they're struggling here, and here are their reading levels. So it may not be a good predictor of where we're going to end in MCAS.
We do STAR three times a year.
Three times a year.
I was going to ask that.
The other piece that's important.
So I'm sorry.
Please ask. No, no, it's good.
So we do it three times, and then when is it decided, I guess, is it decided right after you get the results on the interventions or how to get them to where, I guess, where does it come into play with the interventions where they need to be for MCAS? I guess.
So they're the same.
In the results, when you get the results.
Yes. No, that's a great question. I don't know if the principals want to come and speak to this. I can speak to it at a higher level. If you want to talk to how it's used in your RTI groups, that's fine, you can certainly join us up.
At the elementary school.
Jenny, join us up front. But the standards are the same standards.
To an example, like beginning of the year, we did our BOY data, beginning-of-year data, and our teachers looking at each student on the STAR, you can identify specific skills that we need to focus on. So for example, like fifth grade have five teachers, so they look at those skills. And they divide throughout four teachers because what we did was we looked at MCAS. We noticed our exceeding students actually went backward. So what we are not doing is challenging those kids. So we decided to create a group of students that one teacher will have that group all year, working on acceleration. The other four teachers will take the rest of the kids, look The other four teachers will take the rest of the kids, looking at their STAR data, identify the skills, and then they would do progress monitoring. They finish one skill, checking, you know, giving a formative test, and then go to the next skill. And then they swap, you know?
So once you get the, the results, right, and the data, I guess my next question is, how soon does the interventions come into play? Because if it's three times a year, I'm just wondering if it's not enough.
It's pretty much immediately when they're done. So the window is three weeks, but we don't, we're done, we don't wait three weeks. So if math is done, the following week, we look at the data.
You look at the data.
And we also have a specific group of kids that were the math interventionist and reading specialist that like a long-term support instead of like every six to eight weeks.
Right. And it's not, so just important too, I think, to mention, we, the students don't have to stay in that intervention group from the beginning of year to the middle of year. So they'll assess on those skills. And if the students master that particular skill, they'll, the teachers will restructure the, the response intervention groups and put them in a different group.
And on STAR also have a progress monitoring tool so they can create tests. So it's like a quick five, six questions test.
Check in.
Okay. I'm so, I'm so sorry. One more, one more question.
These are great.
So you're doing your interventions and everything based on your STAR results. What are we doing based on, because MCAS results are very different from the STAR, what are we doing based on the MCAS results?
Can I add?
Sure.
So Jenny shared her.
Christina, can you sit at the table?
Even though we don't have MCAS for pre-K to two, Jenny shared her, actually, my Chromebook, her data with us. So we took it at Millville and took, and we actually can't see from here, but we broke down what every grade can do, focused on the skills that Jenny gave us that kind of showed us like areas that we should build on. So we looked, so everything from pre-K K1 to, we did specialist service providers. So how can they all help? So for example, here's, service providers skip counting was, so they talked about when they're moving, skip counting while they're moving with the kids from location to location. They talked about puzzles and block designs being another area, working on answering WH questions while they're working with students in session. So even, you know, specialists, STEM ideas, introducing new vocabulary, pre-K art, identifying shapes, exposing them to pictures, words of color. So we went through what Jenny had identified in her team and we built off what we can do to help build the foundation so that they are, the foundation's a little stronger for, when we get to them.
Now, is, is middle school doing the same thing? Because the results on that are, well, we saw them.
Yeah. Do you want to speak, Mary and Jill? Do you want to share what we're doing with the MCAS data?
Our, sure. So our intervention model looks a little bit different. So last year's intervention model was heavily influenced by STAR data. And so we have nine-week terms. Students would go into, based on STAR data and teacher recommendation, would go into an ACME class for four and a half weeks.
This was last year.
This was last year. So this is what the model was that got the results that we got. So they would be there for four and a half weeks focusing on the skills that were identified in the STAR testing. But I can also say that, you know, in observation, they would be focusing on the skills identified in STAR, but at least in, there were frequent, I'm trying to think of the right word to use, but MCAS factored into their work. They were practicing MCAS-style questions. They were talking about test-taking strategies. So MCAS informed the work, but the content was determined by the skills in STAR. Clearly, that model didn't, didn't impact, didn't have the impact that we wanted it to have. And the teachers also said that four and a half weeks with their kids was just not enough time. So this year, the groups were determined more by MCAS scores than by STAR data. And they, especially, like we had, we had rosters ready to go for those classes at the start of the year before the kids took the STAR baseline data. And they are, we do an item analysis of our MCAS results that really breaks it down by standard and skill. And those are the things that we're looking at to build our intervention program so that we can really focus in on, you know, 70%, I'm trying to think of a good example, 70% of our sixth graders could not answer a question about a particular math standard. It's skipping. But, so that is something that we're focusing on, both in intervention and in, in general education.
I was just wondering, because I did notice eighth grade was a problem last year. And now I'm just wondering how we're doing the interventions because they are coming up for their next test.
The eighth grade last year, so are there ninth graders now?
Yes.
Yes. So we've got a couple of things happening at the high school. One of the positives of STAR is that it links with an extension program called NearPod. And so NearPod can give you slides and practice specific to the standards that are identified. So it's, it's a, it's a teaching tool. It's a teaching tool. It's not an intervention program. It's a teaching tool.
It's a teaching tool to guide the teachers?
To, with the students, to help more of an individualized instruction. Because you can, you can target what you need for each individual student. You can group them. We're big, we're working big on stations to try to have students being able to help and do intervention within the classroom. That's really been a push from last year and this year. And I think you're starting to see that. While there might not be growth, our average MCAS ELA score at the high school is meeting. It's in the meeting range. That is our average. So it is pushing us. And so our growth will continue to be higher. I mean, our new score is, our new target score is going to continue to be higher. And for math, we are two points away from being in that meeting. So again, we're, we're pushing our kids and we're moving them. Data, 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 and more data. You know, we're going through six-week cycles. We're looking at questions. We're looking at figuring.
That was going to be my next question. How often are you looking at data?
Every, well, I would say we're looking at data at least once a week, but formally there's, with the coaching cycle with, is a six-week session. But the, like, the, the MCAS is, again, item analysis there. The STAR test, even though the STAR isn't showing us necessarily what we're wanting, last year particularly for the high school, I'll speak for the high school, it was really a hit for us that we had 0% of our kids, according to STAR, for two consecutive tests. No Reds, you know, no one, no one was not meeting. And then we had that. So, so yeah, and wanting to push and look at that. This is definitely a collective group and we are looking this at least at the high school level because we don't have a ninth grade MCAS test. This is a two-year process.
Yes.
So we're looking, what we're hoping to see, and with the STAR data specifically, is by the end of that freshman year, they have made that half mark growth so that they can continue that as their, as their sophomores.
We have really strong data cycles in place at all schools and at the district level. So we can certainly speak to those for other.
Let me talk about those data cycles, also our subgroups. We have additional cycles within there that not only we're looking at STAR and MCAS, but we're looking at authentic student work.
So I think, I'll only speak for myself, but for the years I've been sitting here, and we know you're looking at the data. Now I want to know what you're doing with it to fix this.
Thank you.
So I think that's going to be what we need to hear more of in the next, you know.
That's what I was going to say.
The so what, now what work? Yeah.
So what, now what? Hear what? We did it. I think there's no doubt in any of our minds that there's data and that everyone sees it, but how is it going, you know, what are we doing to use it to get these kids?
I'm smiling because that's, that's actually the fun work to share because that's the stuff that we, that's the work that we do every day. So we're happy to, to give regular updates on that for sure. Anything else on MCAS or STAR before we move to accountability? Okay. Thank you for those questions. Okay. So a little bit about our accountability data. So again, essentially, the way the system works is our growth and achievement that we just looked at is one piece of it, but there is also these other points that the Department of Education awards to schools and districts. But I would say more importantly, we look at them not necessarily as points, but we look at them as focus areas. Things like attendance and dropout rates and our student groups, specific groupings, our five-year rate, our four-year rate. So some of the highlights from our accountability from last year, all schools exceeded their attendance targets, every single one. You may remember us having some really difficult conversations about chronic absenteeism across the district. And that is defined as kids missing 18 or more days of school, which is 10%, which is huge. We have made some tremendous progress there. The state sets targets for each school that they want to see as far as all of these areas, and every one of our schools exceeded them. So the good news is we're getting the kids in. And that's through the hard work of our counseling team, our principals, everybody, our teachers emailing, calling, sending letters, following up, telling kids when they come back to school, we missed you, what were you yesterday? That kind of thing. At the younger grade levels, it tends to be more of a challenge with the adults, right? Because the little ones aren't necessarily getting themselves out the door. It's the adult that needs to do that. At the upper grade levels, it's usually a bigger issue with the, with the student, him or herself, because they're more independent, they're setting their alarm or not, if you're my child, and dealing with that. So I was happy to see that all of our schools exceeded their attendance targets there. Our student groups, so our bottom 25% of performing students, our special education, our low income, our high needs, all of those groups are making progress. That speaks very specifically to the RTI models that we were discussing a few moments ago. Those students are actually meeting or exceeding the targets that are set for them. Our dropout or student withdrawal, dropout is a, is a harsh kind of word, but that is how it's, how it's labeled. We exceeded our target there as well, which was great. I believe our, our rate was 1.7, 1.8 last year. So we're happy to see that. Our four-year rate, our four-year graduation rate is interesting. So we didn't, we just missed the target, but it's because our target was already over 90%. Jill mentioned it when she talked about her, our average ELA score at the high school being, you know, just over 500. That goalpost keeps moving. So once you're, you know, once you achieve a certain target, the state sets another target, right? Which is good. They're constantly making the targets harder to reach, which is a good thing. So when you have a graduation rate that's already over 90%, it can be tough to keep making progress on that. When you, when you're graduating classes of 100 students, one student is a percent. So it's, it's, right, like, that's where, when you're small, it can kind of work against you. Jill, myself, and her guidance staff go, and she can attest to it, kid by kid by kid by kid, to make sure that we're keeping students engaged, we're keeping them on track for graduation. And our guidance team there does some incredible work of making sure that the students have what they need to meet those, meet those expectations. Our five-year graduation target exceeded because we have students that stay engaged a little bit longer. Whether it's a special education piece or whether it's a student that needed a little more time, that's actually not a bad thing. That's actually a good thing, that we are getting our students to and through graduation. A nice data point to also share is that we exceeded the target for students enrolled in rigorous coursework. Those are our AP courses. And so I know Jill did a really nice presentation for the committee earlier in the school year, I think it was in August, and going through our results from last year. And we saw incredible outcomes from our students that took the AP exams. And it also shows up here as far as the kids that are enrolled in those classes. And overall, as a district, we are classified as making moderate progress toward our, toward our goals. So kind of the headlines and the impact, and we talked about these, so I'll run through them quickly. But STAR and MCAS achievement alignment is not clear. All right? And we had a discussion piece on that, so we're going to be studying that. Our growth between the two assessments is also not clear, although I think we have some good kind of whys that we're able to get to and now working with our assessment committee to talk about some next steps. Our unique student groups are getting traction. That's showing our MTSS model, that's the RTI response to intervention work, is getting some momentum. Our attendance is improving across all schools. Our kids are engaging in harder courses. We're beating the state in half of all of our achievement measures, which is also very good to see. But we must have a relentless focus on core instruction, on learning practices, and on the middle school. And those are kind of the two bullets. And I know, Carrie, when we shift to your piece in a, in a bit, I know you're going to delve into some of the very kind of weedy details of that work. Anything on our accountability?
I just want to point out that it's part of this whole package. You know, that some people might not understand why we're talking about MCAS and attendance, but it's all part of the state reporting. So all important, it all kind of goes together with getting the kids in to learn and be able to be successful, so.
And to that point, Erin, too, the other piece, when the state, so as I listed here in the last, or there was a slide before the last bullet, we're classified as moderate gains. That's how that is target, that's how that's determined. They literally award you points for all of the things that I just mentioned in the MCAS. So thanks for, for calling that out.
What do they do with that data? What is the data that they get from this?
It's, it's all public. So it's on our district profile.
And we have like a report card, right? On DESE.
So it goes to our DESE report card?
Yep. Yeah. So they, they, if you go, if you go to, oh man, I think I sent you that link, the profiles link. If you go to, and you could just Google it, DESE profiles page, you'll see a picture of the state and you click on our county. And then you'll see a picture of all the districts and the county, click on Blackstone or Millville, and you'll see what all come up. And you can click on, there is more information there than you would probably ever care to look at. There's like so much there. But you can look at all of our, you know, our staffing numbers, all of our student achievement information, our demographic data, all the accountability scores, all the points, how many points did we get for achievement, for attendance? It's, it's literally listed there. And there's a really neat comparison tool called the DART. So you can click on the DART and it will show you all the districts that are similar to ours and how we fared against them. It's a pretty neat tool.
And it has come up spor, you know, sporadically around town meeting and budget time, where someone saw the report card and they're like, what are you doing with all this money if your report card is this? Or, you know, or, so there are people that look at it.
That's why I was wondering, because I'm sure people are looking at those.
Yeah.
And sometimes when people are looking for a place to move.
Well, honestly, that's really what they should be looking at is, and it all kind of, all of this creates that answer for them, so.
And I hope, I hope the committee and the community sees that there, while MCAS is one piece, it's an important piece. It's not the only piece, but it is an important piece. While our data is showing we're about, you know, eight in eight cat, reporting categories, 14 reporting categories, about eight better than the state, as I showed in ELA and math. And there's room to grow and there's lots of work, lots of work for us to do. There's also other really important data points that show the good work that the teachers and the staff across the district did.
All right. Thank you for that. And thank you for presenting it. So we can now finish your evaluation for last school year. So jumping back to school committee, actually, I think we should go through the MSBA update and then into the superintendent evaluation. Tara's not here tonight, so I will share some of this. And Jason, please pick up where I.
Sure.
School building committee, we've had two meetings since our last school committee meeting. The communication of, you know, setting the town meetings has gone fairly well. The school building committee has been able to get out to several public events just to make sure people are informed about the town meetings for each of the towns. So we have Millville Fall Town Meeting, November 1st at 7:00 PM, Millville Elementary School. Blackstone Fall Town Meeting, November 6th, 7:00 PM at BMR. So like I said, we've definitely communicated that into the community and we're in the process.
There's also childcare being provided for both of those, too.
So yes, and I saw something on social media from Building a Better BMR. Was it signups for childcare or just saying that? Oh no, I'm sorry, that's for their event. They're having an event for the high school.
But they are holding childcare at both of those meetings.
But there will be childcare at both town meetings. We have also gone through some FinCom meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings. Jason and Jill went to Blackstone just the other night. And Jason, Tara, Jane, oh, you said Pete was with you in Blackstone. So members of the school building committee have been attending those with the administrators. I think they both still have to have open hearings, the towns. I think they both still have to have open hearings, the towns, with the process to their town meeting. At our last school building committee meeting, we did determine the need for a recording secretary, because it's very important to have, to make sure the public has access to all of the information that has led to the feasibility study, to, you know, the next steps of hopefully beyond the feasibility study. So it's very important to have that public information out and available on our website. There is a school building committee website with as much information as we have. But it was brought to our attention that when this building was built, the school building committee did pay for a recording secretary, just so everything was in order legally and available to the public. And then we determined that that's at the expense of the school committee to supply the secretary to, and it would be someone that would have to attend our meetings. They're not filmed, so where this meeting is filmed, then we have our minutes made from it. This would be a stipend position, hourly position, paid based on the workload. Could we say where we might have that money?
I think through our salary line, I think we'll be okay. We've had a couple of pair of positions we're still interviewing for, and so we have some salary savings there that I think we'll be fine to cover it there.
And there was a reason we needed to do it at this committee meeting?
Yes. The school committee has to approve it, and so we wanted to bring it to the school building committee at our next meeting.
So we can post?
Yep.
They don't have to approve it?
The school committee does.
Okay. So it is on this agenda as action required.
So you need a motion?
We need a motion to approve a recording secretary for school building committee purposes.
No motion.
Motion made by Tara S. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on that?
What is the stipend?
I actually think we just determined it's hourly.
Yeah. They rate based on who's going to be taking care of it?
Okay. All those in favor of approving the recording secretary for school building committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. Was there anything I missed, Carrie?
So it's just the big, the two town meetings that we need people to come out and vote for?
Yeah. Obviously, our job as school building committee has been just to communicate the dates and make sure people are aware. We are not out there to persuade the yes or no's. But it would be nice to see many townspeople, you know, we have a lot of staff that live in town and family members, so we need people to attend, so we know what direction to move in. It's important.
So the question was raised in a few different areas of what happens if it's a split decision, I guess, best way to put it, between the towns? Would that warrant a super town meeting, like in normal situations?
So we have until February 26th to get both towns to approve, so if we need to go back out for another vote, we can. And we, that's a good question. It is one that I've had a discussion with MSBA around. There is one regional district who is able to do that based on their regional agreement. And, you know, sometimes even if it's in the regional agreement, it's not necessarily recommended because it's such a big ask, so we were referred back to our legal counsel. And so if it came to that, we would reach out to our legal counsel for advisement on that. But we're hoping that with the time we have, we'll be able to get it.
So if it's approved in one and not in the other, Matt, is what you're saying, the one that's approved is done?
Yep.
So we're not, bringing them together for a super town meeting, would that be necessary if you're only going back to that one town?
It'd be helpful. Well, for votes, the number of votes, you get a big turnout from Blackstone.
But they already voted.
Right, but it's like when the budget doesn't pass. It's like the same thing, you know, if it goes by one town and not the other. Like when I started, we didn't have a budget, so we brought the communities together. So if that issue would occur again, your question is, would we do that? I'm not sure. When I spoke, like I said, when I spoke with MSBA, they shared one regional that did it, but it then resulted in a series of lawsuits. The region prevailed, but it gummed up the entire project.
But if one town votes yes, one votes no, then we would need to do, say, a winter special town meeting. We wouldn't have to do both. We would just have to do the one.
That's right.
And you go back and answer their question, like, why was it a no vote, and hopefully work towards better understanding? Any other questions? All right. That was the only action required. So now we...
Erin, would it be helpful to, I'm sorry to interrupt, would it be helpful to just remind the community that at this stage, we're just looking for approval for the feasibility study? And so anybody that hasn't tuned in to the...
I didn't know how deep into it I could get without being persuasive.
Oh, I know. Well, I'm just thinking, because if folks haven't watched the finance meetings, or they may not have heard some of that.
Yeah.
Right? So the phase that we're in is looking for approval for the feasibility study. The amounts that we are looking for approval for, because the school committee was able to, through the approval of the town, put $500,000 into the capital stabilization fund from our excess and deficiency fund. We actually will need $373,000 from Blackstone, about 126,000 from Millville to close that gap of 500,000, with the idea that the feasibility study will be about a million. But just, and I know that we've repeated this at all the meetings we've attended, nobody's writing a check for a million dollars. We would go out for a short-term ban, and Denise would work on the financing of that with Lynn Welch and Unibank while the feasibility study is being done. And if that, and that would be assessed to the towns through our capital budget each year, you know, as this project's going on. And then if the, when the final project is presented, if that's approved, then we would roll the cost of the feasibility study into the overall project and then refinance the whole project. Did I get that right, Denise?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
And then the point of the feasibility study is to answer, is it feasible? Jane's words. You know, we definitely all agree that we have a lot of extra real estate, extra room. We're not using it to the capacity it was built for, so this outside company that will come in and do that study is going to, you know, look at it from that lens and make recommendations on what the district actually needs. We're approved for the renovation, core renovation of the high school.
Yep.
So obviously, working towards that is the goal of the building committee, school building committee.
And just as a reminder, that came from the work of the capital planning committee that started in 2019, that led us to where we are now. So it's been a long, slow process. So our friends tuning in at home, this process is anything but fast.
And, you know, just to recap that, we were asked many times, many years from our towns, "What's your five-year plan?" You know, and Matt, who's not with us anymore, but we did, we kind of did our own feasibility study. We had an architectural company come out, and they did all of this work already, but we own it. It's ours. It's not, we can't turn around and say, this is, you know, we have to do it the right way through MSBA. Kind of know what they're already going to find, but from that, we do know that we have over $50 million of capital costs and needed work to all of our facilities.
And 40 million of those at the high school.
At the high school alone.
38 million.
To bring it up to ADA compliance and to make it maybe a state-of-the-art, I don't even know if it would be a state-of-the-art facility, you know, if you're band-aiding and fixing, you know, "Oh, put a new furnace in," or we put, it doesn't make it that open space, welcoming, learning center that we are looking for.
That was 2018 figures, 2019 figures, so.
Yeah, true.
It probably changed, yeah.
Then COVID happened, and building supplies became, true. Minimum of 50 million to start putting in our five-year plan, I guess. And we've worked a lot on that list, too, for the things that we could do. We called it the low-hanging fruit. We've accomplished a lot, but there's so much more, and things that are necessary yesterday that I don't see how we could ever ask our communities for that fix tomorrow. So I think we're in the right path for what we need. All right.
And we'll be at the public hearings to answer questions.
Do we have the dates?
We do. We have the Blackstone date. If you bear with me one second. It is on October 20, no, hang on, sorry.
It has to be like 20th.
We have, yes, we have the Millville Finance Committee hearing is on Wednesday, October 18th at 5:00 PM at their town hall. And then the Blackstone date, Jill, we just got that last night.
I think it's 23rd.
Was it the 23rd?
It's a Monday.
Yes. I think it's the 23rd. I think you're right. I just didn't write it in my calendar yet, but I believe it's the 23rd. It's, yes, it's 10:23 at 6:00 PM. So October 23rd, 6:00 PM.
You said 5:00 PM for Millville.
Millville's at 5:00 PM, yep, on the 18th, and then Blackstone is at 6:00 PM on the 23rd. So we'll definitely be at those meetings to address any questions people have. So to our community, please come out and ask. We'd love to discuss with you.
Perfect. All right. All good information. All right, moving on, we have superintendent evaluation. This is the end-of-year superintendent evaluation for '22, '23 school year. We did work on this as a committee end of summer. We finished it this week, once MCAS was in. One of his goals heavily relied on MCAS data. So I'm going to go through this and with the tool we used as a committee that collected how Jason rated on each of his goals. We'll present this publicly tonight. Then we will move, after, at the end of our meeting, we have an executive session specifically to speak about the superintendent's contract. And then at our next meeting, we will present publicly any contractual information to the public, so. I think we all know what the goals were last year, but I'm going to just list them with his ratings without reading the actual goals. I will also, and of course, you all have a copy, if there's anything specific on comments that I don't point out and you want to, please just let me know, and I'll let you read it. These are not identified to any specific committee member, and we don't have comments on the first section. So first, first is instructional leadership. He rated exemplary. Student learning, proficient. Management and operations, he had worked on environment, and he was rated exemplary. Scheduling and management information systems, proficient. Family and community engagement, he was working on engagement, rated exemplary. Family concerns, exemplary. And there are actually some comments under family concerns. Communications to families and support to the communities are noticed and appreciated. I would like to see increased focus on communication to families around surveys and curriculum aimed at gathering data on students. I would urge Jason to create a more open platform of communication in this area, so the parents can make the best decision for their child. Otherwise, I believe there is sufficient communication on most other topics. Professional culture, high standards in managing conflict, so high standards, he rated exemplary. Managing conflict, proficient. Then on Jason's district improvement goal, creating a system that works for all, he made significant progress. Some of the comments are, "BMRSD continues to make gains in creating a system that works for all, but there is always more progress to be made." The success of the men's leadership group, selection of new social studies curriculum, and successful District of One events all show strides towards this goal. I love the engagement activities we offer, clubs, music, athletics. Let's promote it even more. District improvement goal, cultivating our team, significant progress. I'd like to see the staff survey, ask if the teachers feel supported by their principal, colleagues, et cetera, as well as if they think the PD offered is beneficial, and feedback on the sessions from PD, their feedback and mentors/coaches. The sense of cohesiveness among the staff is evident at the elementary and high school levels. I have witnesses firsthand, and the feedback from staff members indicates that the plan was implemented and executed well. The middle school seems to have a hill to climb in this area, but I am confident that the efforts will pay off with the right staffing in place. I would like to see more information on the outcomes of all the hard work. District improvement goal, long-range and short-term facility plan. Jason met this goal. Work continues with this goal. As we continue through the MSBA pipeline, Jason has been an instrumental component, keeping all things MSBA on track. Great work by all of us, by all on this. Not all of us.
I would agree.
There are subcommittees for short-term capital, as well as long-term, long-range MSBA school project. Jason is moving the district along with these, identifying these important needs. The MSBA requirements are a lot, of which Jason is tasked with. I appreciate his efforts with this. District improvement goal, learning acceleration, significant progress. There are glaring needs at the middle school level as far as testing scores, with the STAR being the only available resource at this time. I look forward to seeing the MCAS scores, but fear they will tell a similar story. Another area of increasing concern is the male student literacy. I'm looking forward to seeing a more focused plan to improve this deficiency. I would like to see more information on the outcomes of the hard work. For example, the outcome results for male students in the area of literacy. I understand MCAS results are not released yet. So these were, this, we had collaborated on before this week. Student learning goal, some progress. While some of the scores are improving, we are not seeing the 5% growth with all students moving at least to the 50th percentile. Continued support and intervention is needed. Overall, a high percentage of MCAS did not meet a 5% goal. Science met zero. Comparing MCAS to STARS shows vastly different results in our learning progress. Are we sure we should be using these two sets of results in future years? While some scores are improving, did I already read that one?
Yes.
I was just going to keep going. Though MCAS scores did not reflect the 5% increase across grades, it should be mentioned that STARS testing in the district shows significant growth and also shows the deficits which Jason has already... deficits which Jason has already used the data to implement intervention is based on that need. STARS show more of the day-to-day grade-level learning and measurement of growth on real learning. Our students are moving. Jason doesn't waver on his 5% increase each year. This shows how deeply he believes in the quality education which all of our students benefit from on a daily basis. And everyone has their copy of that. Jason has already been given his results of this evaluation. And like I said, we will move into executive session at the end of our meeting to finish this process and then make any announcements at our next public meeting for that. Next on school committee, did anyone want to add anything about Jason's? It's a, it's a long process and it's a lot of work that goes into it. I mean, I think it's very obvious that it starts and all the work is being done, you know, throughout the district, so I appreciate all of the efforts and I appreciate your evidence coming to us digitally. But it helps, it makes it much more organized, so. Any other comments for Jason? All right, moving on to next item for school committee, we have the successor Unit C contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I had an initial, just very brief conversation with Julie Wolford, and she's working with her team to reach out to the school committee, hopefully by the next meeting, and letting the committee know that they will be ready to negotiate and starting to set up our process with successor contract for Unit C. So just wanted to put on there as a reminder that we have that to look forward to.
And we do have a subcommittee, but we'll have to just re-verify that everyone that is on that list is able to participate, so we might need to relook at that. All right.
Great.
So next, we will move back to report of superintendent. And Jason will, well, you can pick. Do you want to move to focus school?
I'll do the goals, if that's okay, and then, and then we'll, Carrie can jump in and go through, because that's such a big part of that. Is that all right, Carrie?
So without wasting any time, we're moving into the, the school year 2023, 24 superintendent district and district goals.
Thanks, Erin. And I'm really excited to be sharing these tonight with the community because as I was sharing with Erin when I was working on various drafts of these with the leadership team and with, with Erin, this is really exciting work. Like, this is really deep, meaningful, exciting work. And so every time I have an opportunity to talk about it, it's, it's, it really kind of invigorates me. So I, I hope the community also feels that way when we, and the committee, when we walk through this, this evening. Of course, everything's anchored to our blueprint and our five Cs and the work that we do every day. And so I wanted to start with that because I think, again, as you'll see as we walk through each slide, it really is focused on making this mission come to fruition. The goals were determined in a few different ways. There are four main data points that were really important in helping to kind of land on where we are this evening. The first, of course, is that we're in year two of our Blueprint 2.0, our end-of-year 23 data that we just looked at. The school committee feedback, you have all been very clear with me about what you would like to see. And so I've read through my evaluation very carefully and multiple times. So I do appreciate the time, effort, and energy that everybody puts into that. And I hope you see it reflected here, because some of the comments that a few members made were like, we want to see more of this. We want you to go deeper into this. You want you to show us more of how you're doing this. And that's exciting. That's good stuff. More surveys, like, reach out to the community. What are they thinking? What are they looking for? So I wanted to share that your feedback is very much a part of that, as well as our school community surveys. So we look at the feedback from our students, staff, and families very carefully. We respond to it. Some of it, we can respond to immediately. And that was definitely very much part of helping us determine where to go next. So our evaluation, my evaluation focus standards for this year, which is what Erin had opened the evaluation conversation with, are anchored in a few places. Underneath instructional leadership, we're staying focused on curriculum instruction and student learning. There is a significant emphasis on number, or on letter C of, of this particular area. We've had a lot of conversations recently about impact, like, what's the impact? So Tara, I was really glad you asked that question because we keep coming back to that issue and that question of impact. We can do 100 things, but if only four of them is making an impact, why are we doing the 96 other things? So we're spending a lot of time focusing on those. At our next school committee meeting, you're going to hear our, our school instructional leadership teams present our school improvement plans. And they have been working very hard at something called supercharging their plan, which is looking at research-based practices from John Hattie, who's like a big researcher, and making sure that we have the right strategies in our plan to get the impact that we're seeking with our kids. So I just wanted to call that out. Management and operations, staying focused on environment and human resources management. Again, some of the feedback from the committee was like, keep, keep working on this, keep focusing on this. So some of these focused standards you'll see are the same. Underneath family and community, shared responsibility and family concerns is always an ever-present issue that needs to remain at the top of the priority list as this experience is their child's experience or their children's experience. So we need to be readily available to, to work with our, with our family on, and whatever issues arise. And then our professional culture, right? Staying focused, the high standards and continuous learning. Recently, Jenny and I met with our new staff to do some training on our education evaluation system, and we spent a lot of time talking about continuous learning and, and the need to make sure that we are staying up on the latest research and work. Our student learning goal, and I know it's hard to read, so, and again, there's a lot of language to it, but you have, in your packets, you have the slide deck. It's slide number five. But essentially, we are sticking with the same, at least 5% increase in meeting and exceeding expectations. We need to keep moving the needle. We're not hitting the mark where we want to in all grades and all subject areas. And so not with achievement and not with our student growth. So we're staying focused on those same measurements. And one of the, one of the nuances for me this year and hearing the feedback from the school committee, and again, I won't read through these last two pieces, but in terms of sharing progress, is sharing more of the work. So yes, some of the data, but here's actually how it was translated, and this is what we did with it, and then here is the outcome of that. So I'm really psyched to be at that place. That's a good place to be. And so what we're looking at in the student learning area is, again, as we talked about earlier, from your feedback, not just focusing on the data, but what we're doing with it and the impact of those actions. We're going to stay focused as we have the past couple of years in a few areas. And so I'm going to, I just want to kind of, these are, these are not in the order that they're listed on the slide deck, but looking very closely, as I talked about already, as a result of the data that we've been seeing at our, building our literacy levels of our male students. And I want to be clear about something. I don't think that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna solve that problem. I don't think that we are going to be the ones that address that problem in its entirety, but we're going to stay focused on that. I think that's a really important piece as we continue to work through, work through this. So again, some of these you'll see, and again, through your feedback, we're staying, you know, we're continuing to stay focused on these. So that was one piece I wanted to mention. Expanding the leadership development opportunities for our male students, particularly at the high school, and looking at how do we kind of build that leadership group out? And then looking at how do we start a program at the middle school level? Continuing our work with providing exposure to career pathways for students. Again, our BVXL program that we have, we have the largest enrollment of our students participating in that, so we're really excited to see that. And actually want to bring some of our students to speak to all of you, so you can hear directly from them. So we're going to continue on that. And I did save this piece for last, and when we wrap up the goals, I know Carrie will talk about it, but looking at the, specifically supporting the middle school. Mary and her team are hard at work at the middle school to address some of the data that we saw this evening and things that weren't here that Mary and her, and her school-based instructional leadership team are working on. But we have very specific plans in place to work on our core learning. Again, we're shifting and focusing on those learning outcomes, talking about how to do that through strengthening our instruction, but also the leadership and the coaching. And so we have a very intentional plan in place that Carrie, myself, Jill are working on alongside of all of the principals and our principal professional learning network that we have with our Bellingham and Hope Dale neighbors and having multiple opportunities to plug into that work, along with the work that our coach Mary, we call her Coach Mary, Principal Mary and Coach Mary, but Mary Colonino is doing, working with our coach, Coach Jill. So we also have Principal Jill and Coach Jill, so we have a lot of the same names. So we have a lot of support in place at the middle school level for this year. One of the, the, so that's a bit about the student learning goal. Shifting to our professional, one of the professional practice goal, we have a emphasis on deeper learning. This is my professional practice goal. And so for me to be able to lead the team to a, a deeper place in understanding what a deeper level of critical thinking and learning applications actually look like, I need to make sure that I'm staying ahead of that and I'm able to lead that work. So myself and a small team, actually Jill, Fowless, and Jenny, and teacher from the middle school, Lynn Scott, and Linda Moreau from MES. We have representation from every building. It's part of a course called Foundations. And it essentially is an equity course, but it is anchored, we have picked the strand. It's equity through deeper learning. So we are very focused on the learning aspect of that work. And so I'm excited to be taking this challenge on and looking at how do we support our teachers and students better at going deeper into their learning and not, and I want to be clear about what I mean by that, because it can sound like, like an edgy speak that means nothing, so let me define it to, to address some of the questions. I can see that's spinning in, in the heads of many of you.
Yeah, like deeper learning.
Yeah, like what is it? Yeah. So when you look right now at your, kind of your typical assignment, right? So let's pick a literacy class. You'll see a reading prompt, or you'll see a, a piece of text, you'll see a passage, and then you'll see maybe an open response type question, or you'll see a couple of multiple choice. You've probably seen all these things come home, right? So what we are doing is not, not ignoring those things, but the prompts or the open response question, we're actually looking at the question. So take a deep look at what the question is asking, and then we're comparing that to essentially, there's two pieces of research that we're using. One is called Bloom's Taxonomy, which is basically levels of questions. So knowledge, comprehension, analysis, synthesis, evaluation. And working with our teachers to say, let's look at this prompt and how do we scaffold up what we're actually asking the kids to do with that piece of text? So it's not a who, what, when, where, why question. It's a why do you think? Can you connect this to another piece of text? What's the relationship between, right? It's a different level of thinking the kids are being asked to do. And, and what we are finding is, to no surprise, I'm sure of any, of any of you, when you ask the kids to do that, they can do that. But we need to ask them to do that. All of us, every single one of us around this table, I can tell you for certain, it doesn't matter what school you went to, we're the product of the who, what, when, where, why, go back, hunt and peck, find the answer in the text, fill in the bubble sheet, fill in the missing word. That is what school was for us. That is what school was for many of our teachers. It is not what school should be for our kids now. They should not be filling in blanks, true, false, bubble sheets, all of those things. Does that help kind of answer the question?
Kind of. I guess I'm still not sure, what are you doing with this? Once you do this, what are you gearing this to, I guess?
Yep.
I don't understand.
So we have a representation from each school, right? So then the individual from each of the school is coming back, working with the school-based teams.
Are you adjusting curriculum based on this?
Yep.
Or tests or whatever?
Yeah. And actually, one of the things that the principals are using now, which has been really impactful, is, so again, it's either Bloom's or it's something called the depth of knowledge wheel, a DOK, a DOK wheel. And this is like really nerdy stuff, but this is the stuff we're doing. So I'm answering because you're asking the question. So I don't mean to use this like jargon, but it's literally the work we're doing. So Jill, for instance, will walk into, will walk into a series of classrooms with a DOK wheel. And we will listen and we will look at the questions that are being asked of our kids or they are being asked to respond to. So even if it's a quiz, sometimes you'll see a teacher give a quiz and like, oh, it's not a good day for an observation, let's walk out. We're like, nope, we stay in that room and we look at actually what the kids are doing. So we will then take a look at that DOK wheel, the depth of knowledge wheel, and say, this is a who question, a what question, a where question, a when question. Okay, there's no why, there's no, there's nothing beyond the explain, there's no analysis, there's no synthesis, right? So we're looking at, how do we take the materials we're putting in front of the kids and making them more challenging so that they're thinking at a much deeper level? Did I do a better job of answering what you're, okay. So we're really excited about this work. And it's, this work is very much alive in all of our instructional leadership teams. And so more to come on this particular goal as we work throughout the year. Our Better Together goal are focusing on our systems and strengthening our systems. We are looking to, again, at the recommendation of the committee in some of these areas, to continue to deepen and refine our work in these places. You'll see a lot of things and activities and areas listed. It's because we are working on those things. And so while it ranges from additional professional development modules to year two, three, year two and three staff working with Bellingham and Uxbridge and this joint district work, or it's our principal professional learning network with Bellingham and Hope Dale, or it's reviewing and renewing our elementary report cards, our assessment committee, or strengthening our extracurricular activities for all students, specifically looking at our athletics, music, and club opportunities. This is, this is a lot of work right here. And honestly, if I'm being frank, we could just do this. There is so much that's laid out here, and this is actually a small piece of the work that we are actually doing. We titled it Better Together because the goal here is not only to accomplish the items that are listed, but to involve and engage staff from every grade level across every building in the district and plug them into this. People feel, back to the human resources lens, our standard of the work, people feel more included and inclusive when they're involved in the actual goings-on of the district and not just walking to their classroom, delivering their instruction, and leaving. So like, we're trying to get the kids to engage and stay and involve, we're trying to get the staff to engage and stay and involve.
Got a question for you, Jason, on something very similar to that. Is there any data toward how many kids, and I'm going to say specifically the high school, belong to, because I'm a big believer in belonging, belong to an after-school program, whether it's athletic, whether it's music, whether it's drama, whether it, whatever it is, and I mean, unique, each student, if they have one thing that they belong to? And what is the, what are the numbers toward, is it 90% of our kids belong to something? And if that's the case, has there ever been any, you know, study toward their academic achievement for those that are belonging to something in the school?
That's great. So we have all of that data. I don't have it available right now, but we do keep that data. We have rosters of everybody in all of those programs. And while we, we have anecdotal data, we haven't done a crosswalk in terms of achievement, you know, and, and enrollment and those different types of clubs and activities, but we certainly can do that. My guess is, I'm sure the kids are doing better that are more involved.
That's, that's exactly where I was going with it.
Yep. And so we can bring that data forward as, as we continue our work in that area. Our second, second district goal is focused on, again, like last year, creating a system that works for everybody, essentially, where everybody's welcome and belongs, but we have a really particular focus. You know, we started out, you know, six years ago, talking about District of One, bringing people together, doing events, and those things are good things. And we've done those things and will continue to do those things. But we want to be really intentional about the work we're doing with our community based on the challenges that are in front of our youth, frankly, and our families. And so we've listed a few things here that we are going to look to either continue to do or continue training around. But one of the focuses, focus areas that we have for this year is offering programming for families monthly. And so we have actually coming up And so we have actually coming up the 20, I believe it's the 24th, but some work with Dr. Medina around the dangers of vaping and how to help, you know, parents help their kids. As you know, we're seeing a major problem with that, not just in BMR. And so we have that session coming up in October. We did a hidden and plain site for families in, at the high school during open, or meet the teacher night. And we're partnering with our district attorney's office. They've been fantastic, by the way. They came out and set up an actual bedroom, a kind of a typical, like teenage bedroom and all of the things you should be looking for as you are, you know, as a parent or caregiver, kind of going through your kid's bedroom and things that might look like, you know, an old thumb drive, right? The kids even use those anymore, but like we did, right? And so like, that's probably not a thumb drive, right? And what are some things that we need to be looking for as parents and caregivers help keep our kids healthy and safe? So you will see this year, we have a very strong emphasis on health and safety of our students so that we're growing students that are aware, they understand, you know, the impact of their, of their actions, and we're trying to educate them so that they can make the best decisions possible. So there's a list of items here. We're also continuing our work with the Anti-Defamation League. We've had that for a couple of years at the high school. We now have a branch at the middle school. They've done a lot of work around inclusivity. As you know, we've been working with them for quite some time now. And so we're excited about that. And again, some substance abuse, substance use training that we have set up in place. And so we're looking forward to bringing this programming forward to our families. And as noted on my evaluation feedback, we will ensure to send out information to families before asking students these things or asking kids to engage in these things or, so that parents know, right? I think it's important. And I do think that we've done a very good job of trying to make sure that we're putting that information out there. So we'll remain focused on that as well. Facilities. So this was an interesting goal to create because some of this is not within the control of, of any of us, frankly. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we have a long range in short term, short term, excuse me, capital outlay plan at the end of the school year, regardless of any next steps. We have to have a plan. We are working towards that now, clearly, with the school building committee and the feasibility study. But it's important that we note that, you know, regardless of any next steps there, we have to have a plan in place for the district long-term. So you'll notice that, you know, in terms of how this is laid out as far as its measurement, that will continue with an inclusive process for all stakeholders that will lead to creation of both plans that will address both the building systems and structural issues as well as having too much space. So we are hoping that's through the feasibility study, but we need to make sure we're able to address that if not. So that is a run-through of our goals.
Any comments for Jason or something missing that you wanted him to capture here? I liked what Ted said about the, and I'm, I'll just say it now, but I know I, I worked with you on these, but back to the district goal, Better Together, strengthening our systems. I think on the last bullet where you have strengthen extracurricular activities for all students, athletics, music clubs, I made a note for Ted's request, if we got those numbers now, which he said you have, but.
Yep. We have the enrollment number.
And maybe, you know, showing growth of involvement would be nice to see. So like a starting point now and something for the end.
Sure.
Just, I'd just like to see more results on the movement pieces as far as getting the kids where they need to be for the MCAS. Maybe not just after the MCAS results come out, how we think their progress is going, just more of what you're, just more knowledge of what you're doing and the interventions and stuff.
I think a big piece of that is middle school.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's already been changes.
Right.
That we started school year with. So maybe on our agenda, we need to have middle school moments, something that, so we're all on, you know, there's a lot of work happening. It's a lot of hard work, but maybe we need to start talking about it.
Yeah, we need to see it, know it.
More of it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there was a schedule, there's, there's some pretty big changes, too. I don't think we've ever sat here and talked about it or put it out, maybe on a spreadsheet or, you know, the schedule change is a big piece of it.
Yeah, we can certainly make it an item and.
Jason taught sixth grade the other day. So there's a lot going on.
Some of those pieces, only some of us know if it actually pertains to our students in the building, so.
Or if we heard it, or saw it in an update or.
Heard it from another.
Heard it because we were looking for something and he's like, but I'm, you know, and you know he's doing something, but it doesn't get to all eight.
I will work on my communication. That's what I'm hearing.
No.
No, it's okay.
It's the sharing. It's not the communication. We get a great weekly update, but it's the, you know, obviously, we, you know, we're looking for.
Yep.
Middle school movement and.
I will add a middle school update piece to that.
Well, yes. Very good.
You okay to move on?
Yes.
All right. Carrie, do you want to join us for?
Absolutely.
A few?
Perfect. Do you mind clicking for me?
Oh, no. Or do you want the, I can bring you the.
Because if I do, I'll break the equipment and then I'll be thrown out of here before my presentation.
He's not listening. He's bringing it to you.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Oh, no!
You just look, the little arrows and you just, there you go. All right?
All right. Well, thank you for having me. My name is Carrie Purcell. I work with an organization called Focus Schools. Before I joined Focus Schools, I was an educator for 21 years in Illinois. I was an elementary teacher, a special education teacher, an assistant principal and a principal. I actually have been a recipient of this work and it really made a difference in my school. It really helped my kids grow and achieve. And so I left the district to join this team and have been with this team for the last 14 years. I've been to the school committee before, but I haven't met all of you. It's been a while since I've been here. And so I wanted to give you a little snapshot in who Focus Schools is and sort of what we do and what we believe before I dig into the work. But my goal tonight is to sort of give you a high leverage helicopter snapshot of the work that we are doing this year as a partner with Blackstone. So hopefully by the end of this sort of conversation tonight, you'll have a clear idea of what we're doing now and where we intend to go and really a little bit about our why. But let's just start by taking a couple of seconds to think about Focus Schools. So Focus Schools was founded by two educators who actually were two, they shared a principal position in a middle school in Long Beach, California. And what they realized was that if school leaders don't have strong systems and structures in place to address the needs of all of their students, there won't be any growth. And so they started a company, at the time it was called Focus on Results. It's been around for 23 years. We've changed our name to Focus Schools. The work is still the same. We believe that all means all. We believe that when leaders build strategy systems and strong solutions, we will get results for every students that we, every student that we serve. We believe our primary job is to work ourselves out of a job, and we believe the primary job of the principal is to work themselves, themselves out of a job by equipping and empowering the leaders that they get to serve every day. So our work is around building capacity. Our work is around helping leaders work smarter, not harder. We do that for, through a framework. It's called the Focus Leadership Framework. We really help folks get focused on that one thing that we want all students to know and be able to do by the time they graduate from a district. And then we help build in the systems and structures to make that happen. Through the years, we've worked with 24 states and Canada. Currently, I personally am working with seven districts in the state of Massachusetts as well as a district in Illinois. The work looks different everywhere we go. We are not shrink wrapped. We do not come and do anything to you. We come to serve you. So that takes me to my next slide. So why are we here? We are here to support your efforts that is on this great big poster here. We are here to support the efforts of supporting every student every day. All of the decisions that we make are tied to your Blueprint 2.0 because we know that is your North Star. So we are here to support your why. We know that your principals, your superintendent, your assistant superintendent, your entire staff come to work every single day to do right by the students that we serve. And so our job is to come alongside of you, to partner with you, to partner with the schools, to partner with the leaders to make that happen. We are also here to help with the what, because Tara, as I heard you say when I was sitting back here as well as sitting up here, it really isn't about the data. Of course, that's the end goal, right? But it's what are we doing along the way to get there? And how do we know that that's working? And so we are helping to partner think about that what? What are we doing every day to better serve the students? And we're doing that sort of in a few ways. Whoops, I changed the slide on here, but not up here. I cannot multitask. I can't use a clicker and this at the same time. So we've been here for a while, and when we first started, we, all of our work centered around this thing called the Focus Leadership Framework. Everything looked like Focus Schools. What it looks like now is your work and how we're supporting that. So if you see that sort of visual on the left, the three buckets that we're really working on, no matter what the work we're doing is for that, at that moment in the district, is really around these three things. Number one, how are we continuing to strengthen leadership? You have amazing leaders who are doing heroic work. How can we continue to strengthen that work so that we can make sure that every student gets exactly what they need? Because we believe that when we do right by kids, we should be able to guarantee that 100% of those students show growth. And so Jason was alluding to that with, we're trying to make that 5% incremental progress. We're trying to make those quarter turns. We're trying to pivot because at the end of the day, we are here to serve 100% of our students. And one way that we think that that is, that we can make that happen is to continue to strengthen leadership. We also believe in the power of teams. This job is too hard to do alone. Jason is super talented, but if he did all the work all by himself, we would crash and burn. So how are we working to empower our teams? And we specifically do a lot of work with your instructional leadership teams, and we've heard Jason talk a lot about that already this evening. The role of the instructional leadership team is not to be the secret committee, not to be the secret team that knows everything that the principal knows. The job of the instructional leadership team is to learn system structures, protocols and strategies to take back out to their colleagues so that we're all working together towards this thing, our why, our North Star. And last but not least, we're here to support this idea of a district of one. So everything that we do looks slightly different, but it's all aimed at the same thing. It's aimed at this. It's aimed at making sure that when students graduate, they have the skills that they need to do whatever they want in life, and we are honored to be able to partner in that work. So I want to unpack a little bit about the specific things that we're doing that you see sort of listed in that box. And I'm going to start with the middle school. So we have sort of this three-pronged approach when we're thinking about the middle school. Number one, how are we supporting the building administration? So how are we supporting Mary and Jan in leading this super important work? Number two, how are we supporting the instructional leadership team? We're doing a little bit of a reset with the instructional leadership team with some new membership. I'm going to unpack a little bit about what that work looks like here in a moment, but we're really trying to shore up that instructional leadership team to work alongside the principal and the assistant principal to lead the improvement work. Also, we're doing some specific work with the coach around what does it mean to coach in every single tier? And how do we align that work? And how are we supporting teachers? Because at the end of the day, they need the tools to be successful in supporting students. And then offline, we're continually checking in and monitoring the impact of our work on teacher practice and on student outcomes, and then providing that feedback and receiving that feedback from the middle school. So the visual in the middle has a whole bunch of acronyms and weird words, so I'm going to unpack this for just a little bit. So this is sort of our timeline of our work specific to our instructional leadership team. So we have started working with the instructional leadership team about once a month. By the end of the year, we will have had eight sessions that are about 90 minutes in length that are focused on some of these words that we see on this slide. So the first thing that we started with is going back to that last slide, thinking about how do we empower this team to have the confidence and the skills and the tools and the protocols and the research and the knowledge to go out and lead the school? We know there's work to do with the data. We know the responsibility lies in the adults that get to serve those students, and we know we can partner with them to sort of help them do this work. So ILT was where we started. What does it mean to be a high-functioning ILT? What roles do you need to have? What does your agenda look like? How do you move away from business and focus strictly on teaching and learning, et cetera, et cetera? We've now shifted over to step two underneath that purple arrow. We will never stop talking about ILT. We will always talk about ILT, but now we've added this piece of, let's look at the data and let's figure out, is there something that if everybody got around this something, we call it a school-wide instructional focus here, it says targeted learning focus there, means the same thing. But if we were to identify a school-wide instructional focus, something that we did with every student, every day in every classroom, absolutely no exception, we would get some growth. So the school is in the process of solidifying their school-wide instructional focus. Mary is leading that charge with the supportive or instructional leadership team. They've developed a one-pager of what that looks like and sounds like. They're starting to think about how they're going to measure impact. So that's where we're at right now. That's sort of the work that's in progress. Where are we going next? We have six more sessions and we want to be able to cover. All right. Well, if we have this one thing that we want all students to know and be able to do, we have to have a goal to measure our progress. So Jason was talking about this really rich data inquiry cycle that happens every six weeks. We are going to push the middle school because we know sometimes we have to do something different to get traction. We're going to measure every four weeks. So is our work working? How do we know that? How are we going to measure that? And we do that first by crafting what we call a smart E goal, which means a specific goal that's measurable, it's attainable, but it's rigorous, it's time-bound. It's going to be by the end of the year, we're going to get here, but we're going to check how we're doing every four to six weeks, four weeks for the middle school. And my favorite one is E, and it involves everyone. So the goal will always start with 100% of our students will. So that's coming at the next training. And then last but not least, by June of 2024, you should see all of these things plus the selection of an evidence-based practice. Jason referenced John Hattie. I happen to love John Hattie's work because he's done more research than any human that I, that I know in education. So we're going to pick an evidence-based practice that we think will help our students, and we're going to provide some professional development to our teachers around that. So that is the work of the ILT. I'm going to pause because that, I talk fast, number one, that's a lot of weird words that I just said, number two. Are there any questions about the ILT work at the middle school before we go on?
When did, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, you go ahead, Carrie.
When did you start working? I'm fairly new to the school committee, but when did you start working with the district?
I've been at the district before I had all this gray hair. So this is my fifth.
I think it's sixth.
Sixth year, yeah.
So you've done similar things like this?
Oh, yes. But this is the first year, Tara, that we've had this kind of a focus in, in supporting the middle school. Because the data said, oh my gosh, we have to do something slightly different for them because they deserve it and, and the students deserve it.
You have a question, Charles?
I, I'm not, I, I'm gonna, no, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait for the right moment.
Okay. Yeah, just stop me anytime. Okay. All right. All right. Shall I move on? Okay. So one of the things I talked about with this, was this idea of monitoring and providing feedback. So at the end of every ILT session, we spend a little bit of time thinking about, so what are the next steps? Because educators, me included, probably all of us, have gone to trainings and then we've walked away and it's been business as usual, right? So. So in every ILT training, in every meeting that we have with Mary, today we had a coaches meeting, we spend, I would say, 10% of our time, pause, stop, what are the next steps? Who's going to do it, by when, and how are we going to know it works? So this is just an example of a task tracker, we call it. It's an interactive tool that we use so that when we are not here, we can sort of check in to see, we can tag each other. And so, oh, I didn't turn that, you're like, where is this? Somebody's just stopped. There it is. So we can have this interactive conversation around, here's what you said you were going to do. How's it going? Where's the evidence? Is there anything, any supports that you need from us to keep the work moving forward? So that's a really important piece. At the middle school, everywhere that we work, but, but specifically there, how are we helping that ILT? How are we helping the coach? How are we helping Mary and Jan, the administration, to really come up with concrete, measurable next steps that will be impactful to the work of serving all students? All right. Makes sense so far? All righty. I'm going to do this and then I'm going to click. All right, so we're going to shift away a little bit now from the middle school and talk about another piece of the work. So since I've been here for a while, one of the things that we did three years ago now is we helped with the facilitation of developing District Blueprint 2.0. So you, you probably have this memorized by now. So the first, sort of this, the first part was, we helped sort of with the looking at the data, doing some rewriting, the marketing piece of it. Last year, we had sort of a more heavy hand in making sure that there was follow-up and follow-through. We did more micromanaging of, okay, we have this plan. Now, what are you doing with it? What are you doing with it? What are you doing with it? This year, because everything, you know, you know your district, there's really great follow-up and follow-through. We've sort of shifted and backed away a little bit, though we are still involved. So over the summer, we did a little bit of analysis of how did it go with last year's action steps? Number one. And number two, what seems to be the next best set of action steps to keep moving the work forward? So we crafted some draft ideas. And then at the August Leadership Retreat, we brought that to all of the leaders. And we analyzed that, we tweaked that, and then we handed it over to the district. Because again, our job is to work ourselves out of a job. And this is one area that we think that we're ready to do that. What we will do, because right now it's being managed by the leadership team, it's being supported by ILTs, and obviously, everybody is using this across the entire district. But what we will do now is about three times a year, we will come back. We work closely with Coach Mary on this project, as well as Jason, to say, are you making progress? What do you need next? Do any of these action steps need any, any kind of quarter turns? Do we need to add another one? So we're just sort of providing light, light support in this area. But it is something that we are working on. So I'm going to pause. Again, lots of information. Any questions you have about what we're doing in that area? All right. Moving on. So another fun thing that we're doing is really thinking about the power of the instructional coach. So as you all know, Millville, the middle school and the high school, all have coaches. You have a district coach, and, and she's doing some support of, across the entire district as well as doing some extra coaching support at the complex. So starting today, I'm going to go back to the middle school a little bit, and then I'll talk general. We did a reset, our first working PLC with the administration and the middle school instructional coach around that visual that you see on, in the top left-hand corner. And this is our coaching, our tiered coaching support plan. So in many districts, people had right to that box that's in red. They had right to the box of individual coaching, which is super important. But what we know, if 80% of our students are not showing growth, it's sort of a grown-up problem. And so if, at the middle school, let's, let's use that as an example. Because we're not there yet, if we spent all of our time in individual coaching, we would crash and burn because everybody would need an individual coaching plan at this point. We are doing individual coaching, but we're also backing up to say, well, how are we thinking about our time in utilizing our coach? So an example is, there's an upcoming PD day on November the 3rd, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly. So how are we using the coach to provide coaching support to every staff member around our school-wide instructional focus, around the data, and specifically around this idea of increasing the engagement and rigor of what students are doing in the classroom every day? So we have a plan to think about coaching for all, tier one. Coaching for some, tier two, that happens in PLCs and CPTs and grade-level meetings, et cetera, small groups of people, and individual coaching. So that visual is specific to the middle school. The high school coach has already engaged in that training. And we may bring the coach from the middle school, or I'm sorry, Millville into some of this. We use what's, what's called an impact coaching cycle. That's that visual that looks like a flower. So every time I am coaching someone, I go through this process with them because a coach is not someone that has all the answers. A coach is someone who helps the person that they're coaching find the answer from within. So we use that model to support our principals and anyone else that we coach. So specifically here, I'm doing some work with Coach Mary and also Principal Mary using this model. So that's some of the work that we're doing in regards to coaching or helping coach as. Any questions on that? All right, so last but not least. So the last thing we're thinking about always is what's working, what's not working, and what are we going to do about both? So our job really is to be the outside sort of thought partner looking in. And so we use our own version of a data inquiry cycle. It's that really tiny visual that you can't see any of the words, I'm sure, from the screen. But we go through a similar cycle that schools and districts go through. We analyze the data, we brainstorm why, why we think this might be happening. We develop a plan, we put the plan in place, and then we provide feedback on how that's going. So I have a colleague who's helping me with this work. Her name is Ashley Santiago. So she and I, every four to six weeks, are going through this cycle ourselves, thinking about what we are doing and the impact it's having on the districts we get to serve, specifically here, Blackstone, Millville. So that's something we're continually doing behind the scenes. And we've also done some work this year about thinking about our professional development. Not for us, but for the schools and how we can tighten our professional development. So I think that you're going to see some evidence of that. Schools have not yet presented their SIP plans, right?
Right, and November, first meeting in November.
Okay, so I think that you're going to see some evidence of that. And I think that will be really exciting because at the end of the day, we have three favorite numbers. We believe we're here, wherever we work, we believe we're here to work on the number 50. The number 50 to us means educators, specifically principals and assistant principals, should be spending 50% of their time thinking about teaching and learning. One of the best ways they can do that is by being in classrooms, giving feedback to teachers. Feedback, teachers deserve to know what they're doing well. They deserve to do, know what they're not doing well yet. And then they deserve to get the support from whomever to make that happen. So we're always thinking 50, 50, 50, 50. How do we get our principals less focused on management and more focused on teaching and learning? And I think here, that has always been a top priority and something you should be really proud of. And if we hit 50, then let's hit to 55. And if we get to 55, let's hit 60 because there's nothing more important than focusing on teaching and learning. Because I've mentioned the number 80. We believe it's our moral imperative every single day to be thinking about data. We believe that our students deserve it. We believe that our students must be given opportunities to access, I think you call it tier-one instruction. We sometimes call it core instruction. Because 100% of our students should have access to that. Because when they do, the research shows that to start, 80% of the students will show growth. And so we have to be just sort of relentless on that. Because at the end of the day, our number is 100. We drive into the parking lot every single day. We partner with you every single day to make sure all students get what they need. And we leave nobody behind. So that's why we're here every day, not, I'm not here every day. That's why I think about you every day, though. That's why we're here, that's why I partner with you, that's why my colleague Ashley partners with you. That's why we're doing this work for no other reason, to, to help students grow and achieve. So with that, I'm going to go to the last slide. I'm going to be quiet. I've lathered at you here for a little while now. What questions you have? What? I'm just going to open the floor up. I know Char, Charles.
No, I'm withholding my question.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
It's a quiet group tonight, Carrie.
It is. Well, I appreciate having the chance to be here with you tonight. I think my contact information is not on here, actually. But Jason has my email if you have questions, wonders, if you want me to come back, if you want me to bring examples, whatever. I'm always happy to join you. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Well. I did not break the technology. Passing the time back.
Thanks. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have business office.
Hi, everyone. So the first item on my topic is going to be going through that process. And the way that we've currently been doing the warrant process is the warrants come to school committee meetings and they are signed and then the checks are sent out. We wanted to alter that process just because the meetings that we typically have, we were having them twice a month last year, and we've altered that schedule to be once a month. So that makes us leaving our vendors in the lurch and making us vulnerable to having to pay late fees by waiting for this timeline. So with that, together with the finance committee, and we came up with a proposal for what we could do to alleviate some of that stress on waiting on that timeline. So in front of you is a process that's going to be utilizing a DocuSign. So we would obtain digital signatures from the school committee on the warrants. Same thing that you sign here. It wouldn't change how things currently are happening at the beginning. So right now, the warrants are run. We've received the documentation that is emailed to you with the backup materials and information. So you can look through that before you come to the meeting and you sign off on the warrants. You'll still receive that materials via your email. And then after you've had a day to look at it, you'll receive an email to follow through and sign the DocuSign of the warrants. From that process, a majority vote of five-eighths will be necessary in order for us to mail out the checks. So once you've done that, you've signed it, we will be able to mail out the checks. Those warrants will be still approved during the school committee meeting. So they'll be coming here, they'll be on the agenda. I will be giving you a breakdown of the ones that were, were signed off. So right now, you have it as just a listing item on the agenda, but I'll be giving you a handout so you know which ones we signed off on and what, and when they were signed off so that then you can approve them being more knowledgeable. So, so you want to have any questions or feedback about that process?
Same number of members needed to sign, to authorize?
It's five, five-eighths majority is necessary in order for us to be able to send out the checks. And we did check that. Dan did follow through and come back with that information.
How many people are in the fin, the finance subcommittee?
Three.
So it's more, more members needed than their responsibilities?
Oh, no, well, the, the process of this finance committee isn't to approve the warrants. The school committee still will be going, I mean, they'll be, still, everybody is still going to sign off and see them. So the finance committee will be discussing budgets and all of the expenditures in detail and bringing specific items that he, that I felt that the, the school committee needs to be aware of. So his, history, we have been historically just kind of running and being, when a big changes to the budget are happening. But the finance committee is going to be informed on more to the day-to-day operations so they'll have a deeper understanding of the finances behind the schools so that they can bring the information to you as, as necessary and as they have vetted through that process.
And Denise, so the warrants that we usually sign, they'll be DocuSign'd. So you're going to save them on a file rather than having them, you know?
We will be print, yeah, they will be signed. And then we will, because of auditing, we will, we will still be printing them with the digital signature on them and filing them within the binders that we have to keep them. But your signature will be digital. And it is authenticated and it, and it does meet the guidelines and conformities for our auditing and also for the regulations.
Like save a printing step, but I guess not.
What it does save is everyone having to go to the school to sign off on them because we're not going to be running. I mean, the alternative would have been to approve the finance committee to sign off in representation of, of the entire committee. And I think that that was, that could have been an option. But by utilizing a DocuSign, everyone still has a voice. And everyone's, you know, still is going through that, that signature process.
So what happens if we don't have five signatures?
In 48 hours, that's what I, that's going to be a challenge.
If you don't get them, well, and, and it is going to be, so it comes through your email. You would click on the link to follow to the DocuSign. You will have already been able to review the materials that, that are, the documentation and all of the backup for what's on the warrant. It would just require you to sign in, click, and then sign off on them. So am I to understand that I might not, is there, there's a concern that the committee would be unavailable to, to sign off on them within the, yes?
I don't think so, but I, I, should I ask a question that might help? I, I have, I don't even tell you how many emails I have. So sometimes I don't get to my school district one in a timely fashion.
Okay.
So maybe if there's a, a text chain that can go up and say, hey.
I can definitely, I can do that, I can.
Sign has gone out, that way, boom, I'll log in and go in and take care of it.
There'll be a text that comes out. I will update the process here to include that, a notification that will come to you to alert you to an email within your district email so that you are able to then sign onto that, check your emails and follow that link.
Does DocuSign have an SMS capability where you can send it out like that?
No, I mean, I, I mean, there may very well be some. But I, because, because we're tying it to, I'm, I'll, I'll double-check. I mean, I could send a message, but the link won't be able to be inside that in order for you to be able to Docu, you know, follow it from there.
Right. It just doesn't, it would just serve as a notification.
I will confirm. And if not, it'll be a text, a text will go out here regardless.
Awesome, thank you.
So we should be expecting this bi-weekly?
Bi-weekly.
As, as, as our, our meetings previously ran?
Right.
Which is why, is that, so I understand.
Well, there were some months that it didn't, so.
There's one month where there's going to be three, actually, in one month, based on the weeks and how they fall.
Sure. But is that the catalyst? I, I might have missed that, I'm sorry. Was that the catalyst for, for this, is that we're missing important warrants being signed because of the?
I'm sorry.
Vendors having to wait too long.
The vendor, okay, so if a vendor waits for their payment, they tack on a late fee.
No, understood, understood.
And we're negotiating that right now because this one was, was a four-week lead time in order for us to be able to get the payment sent out. So we had to reach out to a lot of vendors just to, just for them to respect the fact that we're apologizing that this is taking longer.
Fair enough. Yes, Matt.
Answer your question.
This is due to the timing of the meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't actually hear what you were saying.
I was asking if it's because we changed our meeting schedule.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I just want, I'm just trying to get a better understanding as to why we're.
Due to trying to mitigate some problems that we're having with our, our vendors.
Because of the change in the meeting schedule.
But there were weeks where we didn't have meetings and we went into time.
So this saves everyone that step of having to figure out when to get in there.
Well, I, I'll say I appreciate the, the fact that we're trying to alleviate any sort of ability, you know, any sort of late fees or, you know, encumbering any sort of extra fees that we might.
It was never our intention to incur them.
It never, it never was, but, you know, if this alleviates it in any way, I guess, does the the cost of DocuSign outweigh the, the fees that we're encumbering?
The district is already utilizing DocuSign as part of the human resource process. So we're utilizing all of our employment onboarding paperwork through that mechanism. So we were able to just use that mechanism that's already in place that's not going to cost us anything.
Oh, that's great.
Simple, it's a simple. Simple, it's a simple thing to use.
So we'll be using it for even to, like, tonight? We're not going to have this anymore?
Well, you have it tonight.
Right.
But yes.
But at our physical meetings, we will, we'll be Docu-signing?
Right.
In that day or so?
Prior to sitting here, we won't pass the yellow folder.
Yeah, there'll be no yellow folder going around.
No, that's good.
It'll just be, it'll just be the approval at the beginning.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Pointedly said, Carrie. We'll be passing the yellow folder.
I move to approve the adoption of the new warrant approval process through the use of DocuSign set forth by the Director of Finance and Operations.
Thanks, Ted. The motion made by Ted to approve the warrant approval process, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any other questions for Denise on the process? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Next item I wanted to be discussing is the audit. The 22 audit has been completed. We're just waiting for the reports from the audit company, Robert Brown. And as it, as we've done with all of our other things, and we're just getting all the feedback in. So those will be released within the next, I want to say, two weeks. We should have them released. And we are already beginning our 23 audit process by submitting our trial balance and getting, in order for us to get on their schedule, we have to do a few things beforehand, and we're doing those. For our end-of-year reports, those were due on the 30th of September. We got everything submitted for the states for what we had to do. And we will use those documents to start initiating our audit process so we won't be spending it late. It is due in March, the audit to the state for our records of our finances. We are behind this year. They are aware of it. We had a little bit of lags. A lot of districts are. It was really hard to get our auditor to get on their schedule because everyone is booked up and because of the COVID kind of. So this is a year where we're not going to have any COVID delays. So we will be on a timely basis, and nothing will be late. Significant audit findings, and I don't have the actual report in front of me. I don't want to be quoting it verbatim. But there wasn't a substantial amount of anything findings. The one we did have for our single audit, which is, was just a paperwork that was missing for one particular month. We've already addressed that and put a corrective action in place. And the corrective action for the missing paper was to also not only just have it on paper, but on it right when we're doing it to make it electronic and digital. So we have it in two places. So that was our corrective action.
Was it the food service?
It was, the food services was our single audit. And it happened to be the month of October of '21, where we were missing a particular count of meals that were served. And when, an audit of the paperwork indicated that they were doing it on limited practice of using Post-its for tracking of things from each of the schools. So that practice is no longer a practice, and we've put new measures in place.
It probably never should have been a Post-it practice of lunch count.
Barbie it for me.
Yep.
So.
It was just the month of October.
That was the only month where we couldn't find the Post-its.
So like, they would just put, push the Post-it over?
The Post-its were attached to a piece of paper from each of the schools because we had to have meal counts from each one of them, so they would be posted.
Were there tallies or something on the count?
I'm so sorry, they were tally counts.
100 Post-it notes.
Tally counts.
There were tallies on the...
Tally counts on each one of the Post-its to count up the, and we...
Stuck on one piece of paper to represent.
And we are extracting the data from the NutriKid system, which is what is designed, that's our POS system, which is why we have it. So we're utilizing all of our mechanisms that we have. Any questions on the audit overview? Next on the agenda is the personnel update. You have a personal listing inside your packets. We still have a couple of vacancies. We have a couple of appointments on here, some Unit C, other positions. Does anyone have any specific questions on the personnel changes for the month of October?
I, I just don't, is this the, is this the ones that haven't been filled, too?
The ones that haven't been filled on here? No, no, this is, these are the appointments. So these are not the current vacancies as they are. These are, and predominantly during the school year, we do bring on a lot of day-to-day subs. We have brought on some paraprofessionals, one at the high school, one at the middle school. And we have also brought in a couple of teachers. We have a STEM teacher at MES, the music teacher at the elementary school, and a math interventionist.
Those are the open positions.
This is unrelated, but do, did we not, I'm sorry, kind of related, maybe, but I'm just wondering about the STEM teacher for the high school.
It's vacant still.
Vacant still.
Yep. So that position is vacant. We have a middle school special, and we just received our SLP.
Yeah.
Speech-language pathologist is going to a different school district.
So I will bring a list of the vacant positions to our next meeting. I apologize.
But no, that's okay.
The high school STEM?
Yep.
So there's no manufacturing class? October, so the kids that were going to have it on their schedule, what is...
They don't, so we reassign them.
Some were reassigned into a study, so they lost a credit.
That was done through phone call. So the way that was explained to me was that that was done through phone calls to parents. And that was not just assigned. I checked, I checked into that. You're saying that's not true?
Meaning the parents called?
Well, I just know that for my son who's in a study, I didn't get a phone call. I just, it just popped up in his schedule.
Okay, so I'll follow up on that tomorrow.
So the first few weeks, they were assigned to that class?
Yep.
Is that, that was really the question? But, I mean, that's a good point, Tara, this credit. I mean, for a freshman, that's going to affect him?
Yes.
When, when they could have had senior proof, I guess. I mean, that kind of thing.
I'll get an answer for that tomorrow. Yeah. I can put it in the update tomorrow in terms of what guy...
Is that just a semester?
Yep, they're trying to fill it for a second, second semester. If anyone knows anybody that wants to teach manufacturing, it's an incredibly difficult position to fill. So we are still beating the drum.
Well, I mean, maybe posting it different from STEM? I know we need to focus on that, but maybe posting it for the manufacturing piece? You might, we might be missing out on...
Even in a CVTE field, in the chapter 74 tech programs, that's an impossible position to fill. By the amount of licensed teachers within the state for manufacturing, their districts, tech schools are fighting to get those people.
So in the future, we're going to have to think of what we can supplement that with because that's something that people, that will, that some students, I don't know, it's like a comparable class to tech schools, you know? So we should think about how we're going to replace that.
I mean, maybe it needs to be looked at differently. And maybe we need to, like, reach out to some local businesses and make it more of an internship than a classroom setting.
Yeah, what we're losing out is on the licensure piece. So we had some candidates. We had one from Rhode Island is very different, but he's a licensed CTE teacher in Rhode Island. They don't require bachelors. We don't require bachelors here either necessarily. There's a bunch of different pathways that you can get a CTE license, but we're not a CTE school. So having a CTE licensed teacher in a non-CTE certified school is another problem. We have been around this issue so many times trying to find a creative way to get a real manufacturing teacher, engineer, you know, engineering and manufacturing. And it's, so, but we will continue to try to think different on that. We've posted it a few different ways, too, and that has not helped either. But we will keep trying. But I'm all, I'm concerned that that's the case. So I will have an update for everybody tomorrow on the, on the kids that need the credit.
Next item on the agenda is the expenditure report. Anyone have any questions regarding the expenditure report? You'll see at the top section, we have received funds. We were waiting on some assessments to come in from our supporting towns. Those have all been received, and both towns are current.
Any questions for Denise under business office? Thank you. Moving on to facilities. I'm going to make sure you're first next time.
I was going to say thank you so much for being here.
It is what it is.
We're going to move them up next time.
You skipped over surplus items, cafeteria.
Yes, surplus items. That's on the facilities.
It's on the facilities.
It's yours.
Okay. Well, I did disconnect that. No, I'm sorry. I did disconnect that today, and that is ready to be removed.
So we actually need a motion to allow the surplus item to be disposed of? Or there's actually two items?
Yeah, do you, do you want me to explain?
It's a, it's three sections, two items.
Yeah, it's, she wrote a letter, a very nice letter. Gave us the serial numbers, which will... So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the request for permission to dispose of broken, broken steamers and kettles.
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. I think the letter's self-explanatory. Any questions or comments? All those in favor to dispose of the broken kettles and steamers? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that, we missed that.
The new item is supposed to be delivered on Monday, so, so it's up to go. The high school, there's been no progress on the pipe leak. Still need to coordinate that with the plumber and make sure there's no activities going on in the weekend. He also stated that he would do it during a regular work, during weekday night after hours for the same cost. We'll get that screened out. The irrigation system on the lower soccer field has not been working. I called in Traf Technologies, and they discovered that the control panel was frozen. At first, they thought they were going to have to replace it, but we powered it down, replaced the batteries in it, reprogrammed it, and it seems to be working fine now. Ventilation system down in the boiler room, that's been addressed. We do have to control the outside vents manually, but it's not an issue because it gets so hot in there, no pipes are going to freeze. The middle school, we had a four-inch main that was leaking out here in the sixth-grade corridor. I was able to tighten the union on it, and that stopped the leak. So that was addressed. The state elevator inspection was completed on Tuesday, October 3rd, and there was no issues found with that as well. JFK, AFM, MES. The sink in the girls' bathroom located outside of the JFK cafeteria has been repaired. That was done on September 13th, the day, Saturday after our last school committee meeting. So that's been addressed. And Millville Elementary School, we had one compressor that was not running that was caused by a power surge that we had back in September. We were able to, again, reprogram that panel and to system the compressors back up and running. And additional note is, we did fire up all boilers recently on the cold mornings to make sure we're getting heat to the buildings, and all boilers are running.
Except for...
This is what the exception is.
Except for...
Oh, no, no, that's no longer an exception. Millville fired up today.
Okay, because we don't want them to be cold.
Oh, no, 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 that was addressed, too.
I was like, what?
In fact, that happened on a recent power outage. That was what, Tuesday morning? That's why it's not on this.
Oh, yeah, you sent us an email.
Yeah, we sent an email out. So again, the control system, the Siemens control computer needed to be rebooted. So we called Siemens, they walked us through it, got it rebooted, and the heat was on today.
Can you refresh my memory? The heat last year in Millville, did we, was that fixed?
Yes.
The...
It was done during April vacation.
Okay.
The new software, Siemens control panel, all that, yeah.
And that's what needed to be rebooted?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm thinking maybe we got to put a power surge on the cord for the computer.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
You're welcome. All's up and running.
And, and I know we've talked about this, but I, the, the parking lot, the handicap parking lot that we added to the track and the railing you put in, I've walked over there a few times now, and it's, it's just perfect. I can't believe we never did it before.
Yeah. Yeah, the ramp.
It's very accessible. I think the railing you built is perfect for safety reasons.
Yeah, it is amazing.
I think it's noted, though, that many people are parking over there. I'm glad we put the five-foot signs up, but I don't know if it's actually being controlled during events and stuff, so.
Yeah. I don't know, we don't have police on detail, do we?
No. I mean, I guess nobody's really going to...
Well, we put Mr. Killian in there, I think.
I just hope that it's never an issue that people show up that need it and can't park there.
Correct.
We made it big enough.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
What about sending out a district email just to remind her?
I mean, maybe if it became an excessive issue.
I mean, parents can still park on the side, either side of that.
They're parking on the grass and walking in on that side, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't have to take care of handicap parking spots.
Like homecoming night, they were definitely there, so. But as long as that area's being left open for the people that do need it, and they, anyone can access that.
Yeah.
You know, it's a nice, people that even have trouble walking up the incline. It's a nice...
I noticed, too, like, with all the parking that was going on, nobody was parking around the back of the building, which was also a short walk to the track, if they just drove around the building. Everybody wants to park right near the track.
Yeah, they end up parking up the driveway out in front.
Yeah.
Driveway, but...
Which it's actually a shorter walk if you went around the back.
Yep.
We'll park out back sometimes.
Even next year, we'll have a park in detail. At least they're in there. Looked like a good crowd for homecoming.
Yeah, it was a nice turnout, I think. All right, so next up, we have...
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Facilities requests.
Can I add one? That's what I was, my, going through all these papers, that's what I was looking for. We just received a last-minute one from Blackstone for this weekend. Their fall festival, they're concerned about the rain. Although I don't think the rain's coming anymore, but I'm not sure. It was the, it's here, I just have to find it. The request is for Saturday for the high school. So we checked it, and it was fine. But they wanted to reserve spacious in case they got rained out and they had to move their operation into the cafeteria. So I just need to find it.
The parking lot will be left open for the band? The front parking lot? So they could just put their cones up?
Yeah, yeah, it'll have to be, yeah. I don't think it's going to rain now, though, anyway, so, right? Nope? So maybe we'll...
But otherwise, they have that space for their, unless there's a football game, they move to another building, but...
There's no football game this week.
No, so the band will be out there?
To worry.
Mid-afternoon, I'm assuming the same time as...
As they're a bit? We'll make sure that there's not a conflict.
All right, are these duplicate, or am I just seeing, do I have yours or something?
No, you have a few, there's a few things.
So town of Millville, town meeting?
Yep.
November 4th, so obviously we know these are cleared by you.
Yes, and then, and then we have the Building a Better BMR session.
So some of these should match up?
Some of them do, but not all of them.
All right, yes, so Building a Better BMR babysitting for town meeting, May, November 1st for MES. Cafeteria.
Yep.
Building a Better BMR information session, session at the cafeteria.
10/20, uh, 10/24, October 24th.
Tours of BMR and hosting? And then Monday, November 6th, Building a Better BMR babysitting in the cafeteria? Then we have some. See, I think these are copies, are you missing?
Yeah.
I am. This looks like.
They're the right dates, November 6th, I think this is a duplicate by October.
Oh, okay.
So November 6th is just that one date, it's a duplicate.
I, one looks like a photocopy and one looks like a hit, I thought maybe I had the original.
No, I think I have both too, and one is different than the other.
I mean, they could have double the space if they need it, I just didn't know.
No, I think it's a duplicate.
All right, so then the one, I don't want to miss any, uh, middle school facilities use evaluations for tryouts for travel basketball. They prefer to use the middle school. October 23rd through the 26th, and November 6th through the 9th, 5 to 8 p.m. And this is already approved by the Secretary of Independence, so. Looking for a motion for, to approve all the facilities requests presented tonight?
So moved.
Motion made by Chuck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. All right, so next up we have School Committee Forum. Does anyone want to share any highlights from, since we'd never seen reps here tonight? Homecoming weekend, I think it was very successful, all of our sports teams had their home games.
It was really pleasant, the, at the football game.
Yeah, yeah.
We're at the track with all the lights on and.
It was huge. Yep, and the cheerleaders, the band.
The band, they were on the field, like quickly, did their routine within 12 minutes and quickly off, it was really good.
I'd like to add too, that the homecoming dance, that was a huge turnout, and the students really enjoyed it. Hopefully next year we can have it on like a Friday night or something, because Friday morning was a little tough. But they seemed to really like it.
Student parking lot looked a little empty first thing Friday morning.
Yeah, yes.
I was thinking about it though, they were, it ended at nine, I think they were able to leave by eight if they wanted to.
Some didn't even want to leave.
The band, I mean, usually Thursday night is a band night, and they don't get out until almost 9:30, so I was like, actually, you're home earlier tonight, just, um, but yes, Friday morning was, however, they're young and resilient, they made it, and then they all came back out Friday night for the event, so. So, yeah, homecoming was a success. The band has unfortunately taken a lot of hits with the weather. They've, um, typically going on their six or seven show right now, and they've only had two. The home show was rescheduled, um, and now is canceled because of the lack, the bands that were coming, which were 12 to their home show, didn't recommit to the rain date. So the rain date was going to be this Sunday, um, so they've canceled their home show, they were going to reschedule it to a community event. Obviously, we're hoping a bunch of people will come out for that, however, they've now made a rain date for their rain date of October 29th. 1 p.m. at BMR.
Yep.
On the track, which will be nice, so they're, the expense of renting a field, a stadium field for that, um, I think with only one band that had committed, the US bands wouldn't even send judges for that, for two bands, so they are reconfiguring it, and I believe it is October 29th now. And hopefully, the show goes on this Saturday without rain, um, but it's only a few weeks till finals, so it will probably be the least amount of time they've competed ever before going to MetLife. But there's, they're out there every two night, every, twice a week, for three hours at a time, you know, acting like they competed last weekend, so I think they're putting the best effort in.
They, they have some competition again, the Durfee Show, so I get home from work yesterday and my son, my freshman who's in marching band for Portsmouth High, said, "I have some good news and bad news, Dad." I said, "All right, what, what is it?" He said, "I'll give you the good news first, we're going to New York for a band trip." I said, "So the bad news is the cost?" He goes, "No, I didn't even think of that." I said, "Of course," and he said, "The bad news is, our, our marching band director told us, we're going on at the Durfee Show right after BMR." And he said, "So, you have to pick which team you're going to vote for."
When is that?
It's the 21st. So if I show up in a Portsmouth hat and a BMR shirt, you know, just don't care.
It's going to be a tough one for you. So that's next weekend.
Yeah, it's a week from Sunday. Yep.
So this weekend, they are at Bridgewater, and then, that's Fall River?
Yep, Durfee's Fall River, yeah. And the coach, and he shouldn't have said this, but the coach said to them, "Don't get your hopes up, you guys are running against BMR."
So we do cross paths.
We do, yeah.
You thought we didn't.
Yeah, we do, yep. So it'll be fun. Purple and gold, and the red, white and blue, they're all coming out.
And when are they going to New York?
In the spring, for a parade or something.
Very nice.
Yep.
All right.
That was funny.
Anyone else want to add to, and any other school committee forum requests? So our next school committee meeting is November 2nd, we changed that date, so please make sure calendars are updated. November 1st will be Millville Town Meeting, November 2nd we will meet, and then the following Monday, November 6th is the Blackstone Town Meeting. And after that, we have December 14th, so those will also be full agendas, because it's just our one month, one monthly meeting. Are you inviting the MCAS kids in?